Are you as passionate about local governance and municipal issues as I am? Well, then the cross border interviews is your show. We are here to provide you with exclusive insights and thought provoking conversations focusing on municipal matters from across Canada. And now you have the chance to be part of our incredible journey by backing our show for as little as $3 per month. You can help us grow and bring more exciting content to your ears. Now you might be asking yourself, what sets the cross border interviews apart from other shows? Well, we're not your average show. We dive deep into the unique challenges, successes and innovative solutions of municipalities from across Canada. We bring you unbiased, unfiltered conversations about municipal issues from coast to coast to coast. By supporting our show, you become an essential part of our mission to amplify the voices of local leaders and shed light on the issues that matter most to our communities. Together we can foster meaningful change and create stronger, more vibrant communities within our great country. Simply visit our website at crossborderinterviews.ca and show your support today. No matter how small, your contribution makes a significant difference and allows us to continue producing great shows like the one you're about to hear. Together, let's make municipal issues matter again. Welcome to the cross border interviews, the show where we sit down with local elected leaders from all across Canada. On today's episode, we'll be learning about who our guest is, what drives them and how they're working to make their community a better place for everyone who lives there. Now we are honored and pleased to have for our 600th episode, our 600th guest of the cross border interviews from Cypress County, Alberta councillor Robin. And I literally forgot your last name.
Kirkupi White.
Kirkupi White.
Yeah. How could you possibly forget Kirkupi White?
Councillor, thank you so much for doing this. I want to start with the basic question that I start all my interviews off. And for the 600th episode, you're no exception. Where did your sense of duty to serve come from?
You know, it, I, some people call it calling, some people call it haunting. Sometimes I feel haunted by, by the call to be, to be involved in my community. It's a, it's something that from an early age I got involved in, in local politics and, and service and helping people in the community. And every time that an election came up, uh, we were asked to consider, you know, getting involved, whether that be at a provincial or federal level or, or municipal. And it was always the wrong time, the wrong time, the wrong time. And in 2017, uh, it just felt like the right time. And that's, uh, that's really what it came down to. I've always wanted to help out in the community and this was one way that we could start with that.
So I want to go back to the beginning though, because you don't just randomly wake up one day and say, I'm going to run for council.
No, that's true.
Were your parents political?
No.
Not at all.
Not at all. No, but, uh,
Like was it discussed at the dinner table even?
Not at all. No, I was, uh, going back, I was probably 16 years old when I was, uh, on my first constituency board for Lauren Taylor, who was at the time Minister of, Minister of Environment, I believe at the, at the time.
For the province.
For the province. And, uh, I was a part of a group of young, young conservatives that, uh, we were known as King Klein's kids. So we would, uh, we'd get rallied in to come in and do some security detail, make sure that nobody was gonna throw something at, at the premier at the time. And, and that was honestly, that was what got me started is just getting involved at the, at the most basic level and helping out, uh, on the board. And learning a little bit about governance and how that goes. And, uh, and then from there you just, you, you stay involved and you make friends and, uh, you, you kind of look at it and you start dreaming a little bit about what it might be like to actually be behind the table. And so I actually started off mostly as a lobbyist. Um, when I was 19, I worked at the United Nations, um, as a lobbyist for three weeks, right before the World Trade Centers went down. Actually, I was there for the world summit for children and families. It was the fourth preparatory conference for that. Uh, the group I was working with was the World Youth Alliance and we were a body of five million youth around the world that were focused on promoting the dignity and respect for the human person. That was, that was what got me in. And so, you know, you spend hours upon hours upon hours, uh, at the general assembly, working with people and trying to, uh, make small wins on language and policy. When you get to a point where, you know, I graduated from that into, you know, running that, that drug prevention program I told you a little bit about. And then to working with the Chamber of Commerce and with the construction associations where you represent your memberships with the, the municipal and the provincial and federal governments to make sure that we have policies in place that are appropriate for the communities and for the workforce and for the industries. And, uh, you know, what a, what a difference it makes to be, uh, the one behind the table, um, versus the one that's presenting to the table. And, uh, so it was, it was definitely, um, an aspiration that, you know, built, I'd say 15 years ago. And then it was kind of a slow build into that, you know, getting connected in the right boards and, and, uh, you know, becoming a little bit more known. I was always, my, my father and my grandfather were very well known in the area. My grandpa, great grandparents homesteaded here in the early 1900s. And, uh, but I was as Robin Kirkupi White, I was always Robin, son of Sheldon, son of Reuben, you know, and, and, uh,
Feels like an old Scottish Celtic.
Exactly, exactly. And, and so when, uh, when it was started to be, oh, you're Sheldon, you must, you're Robin's dad, then we knew that it was maybe the, the, the right time to get, uh, to get going.
You, you talked about provincially, you talk about international politics that you were involved in with the UN. You talked about your constituency. How does a guy who were, has connections to the UN, who has connections to the progressive conservative party under Ralph Klein, wind up being a councillor for his home community? Because it sounds like my, the trajectory that you were on was to go either provincially or federally. What made you decide in 2017 that municipally is where you want to start or even just give back in the political realm?
I think timing was a big part of it. You know, we had three young kids at the time. Um, my wife and I started fostering around the same time and, uh, it was, you know, I also own my own business, right? So once you jump into provincial or federal, um, you know, you're, you're kind of walking away from that for the most part. And so I think that being municipal, it was a really good option to, uh, to get involved. And I looked at it as an opportunity to build a resume too. Because if, as an elected official municipally, if you do well, it makes transitioning to another level a lot easier. If you do poorly, um, then you probably shouldn't get hired at the next level. And, and, uh, so, you know, that was great, but you're right. Like my, my brain is wired for, uh, kind of that 30 and 40,000 foot policy stuff that provincial and federal definitely allows you to sink your teeth into, which is I think why, um, my interest within RMA and with FCM, uh, was able to kind of blossom because you can't get involved in those organizations and do that kind of provincial and federal lobbying work as a municipal councillor unless you're an elected official. And so it was a good fit that way.
In 2017, you decided to put your name forward. I'm assuming there's not just a light switch that goes off and say, hey, this is the election. This is the one that I'm going to choose because there's previous elections. I know timing is a big thing, but you, you ultimately have to make a decision to say, okay, this is the election. This is the one that I'm choosing. What was going on in Cypress County that you said to yourself, okay, everything at home is good. Kids are growing up. We've got a stable foundation here potentially with the wife and, uh, kids and a little bit older than they were four years ago. Now let's look at what's going on in the county. What was going on in the county for you to say, okay, this is the election? Or was there an issue?
No.
Because a lot of times when I talk to councillors and mayors and reeves, they will say that there wasn't just one issue that made them go into it. It was a desire to give back and that was the realm that they want to start at. Was that like it for you or was there an issue that sort of put you to say, Robin's opinion around that council table would be a benefit, not just to my area, but to the entire county?
Yeah. And I, I think that I can understand where others would say, you know, the time to give back. And, but, you know, I was in my mid 30s. I don't think that that would qualify as, as my, my primary reason. When it boiled down to it, I saw that Cypress County is a beautiful place to live. It's a gem in the southeast. There has always been this, um, sentiment that I've never bought into, but I understand why it's there about how we're the forgotten corner or the unknown corner in southeastern Alberta.
I think there's a podcast called the forgotten corner.
Yeah, probably, but it was always something that I, I really took issue with because I think that, uh, until you step up and speak up, you're going to be unheard and unseen. And, uh, what I'm very good at and, and, uh, and what we've done very well, I think since we've gotten onto council is, is the networking side and promoting, uh, an area and, and having that voice. And, um, you know, whether it's at RMA now or at FCM on the federal level, um, Cypress County's voice has definitely been elevated to, to different heights. And that, that I think is a, a big part of, you know, what I'm able to help bring to the table. It's, I know everybody has their gifts. Mine is I have a lot of energy. I love to bring people together. I enjoy making new friends. I am very passionate about making friends with people who I have strong disagreements with. Uh, I think that that is something that our world is missing right now. We've become so polarized on both sides that even though, you know, down the road provincial or federal, you know, still is something that intrigues me. We need to find a way to, to bridge this gap right now. I make the joke all the time that my business is building walls, but in politics I build bridges. And, uh, that is, that is something that we need to do a lot more of.
You, you bring up a good point and I love these conversations where I, I feed off of what people say. At the round the council table, you have to look at issues not as a conservative or an NDP or a liberal or a green or a blocker, People's Party or whatever. You have to look at it as a resident. And you have to work with people who may have different political leanings than you.
Yes.
In your six years as a councillor, have you been able to find that sweet spot of being able to work with people, but understand that at the end of the day, you may not go for a beer with them?
Uh, yeah, I think that it, it depends on who you're working with. I, I look, I look back to, you know, when I first got into my career in communications, um, you know, we sat down and we did Myers-Briggs, we did the true colors, personality tests. Yep. And, you know, the funny thing is that when you compare 2001, 2002 and that approach to which what we're doing and, and doing that exercise is how do we self assess and learn about how we operate and how we receive information and communicate? But we also are learning about how does Chris Brown receive information and communicate and how can I connect with you? And what we've lost in the last 15, 20 years is this desire, I believe, to want to know how the person that we're working with engages. Because whether it be true colors, you know, yellow, green, blue, um, gold, I think it was, or, or, um, orange.
Yeah.
Um, or it being political colors, knowing what your friend or your colleague feels just allows you to know what filter they're viewing life through. And if you are an empathetic person and you can sit and understand, you don't have to buy into what they think or believe on those specific issues, but it allows you at least to, um, start in a position of good faith where you're trying, first of all, to understand, uh, what motivates the person that you're talking to. I think right now the challenge that we have is that there is a, a large amount of people out there that are not interested in reciprocating that kind of an approach. And, uh, so yeah, I, I've worked with people across the board that have very different ideas, but somebody that might have a lot of the same ideas as me also doesn't necessarily want to do the work to understand the other side. That makes things a little bit tougher.
You represent a ward in Cypress County and you sit around the council table with different people who represent different wards. But you now and I know that you can't look at the individual wards when you're making decisions. You have to look at the big picture. In your role as councillor and advocating not only for the greater population, but for the individual, how do you do that? Because and I'm going to quote Spock off of Star Trek here.
Oh, awesome.
Exactly. God, a lot of municipal councillors are getting this joke and I love it. How do you balance the needs of the many against the needs of the few?
Hmm. You know, again, you have to take that step back and, and remember that when you're, when you're making decisions.
Easy to take that step back though?
No, not at all. In fact, I think that they should abolish ward systems. Yes. All right. You, what you said, episode 600.
You, you, you and Kevin Zaharis should sit down and chat because he wants to abolish some communities. You want to abolish the ward system?
Here's, here's the problem though, that, that exists with the ward systems is that as much as you want to make something happen for the community as a whole.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, the funding rarely exists to, to do a project that is so broad reaching that you can actually implement it across the entire county. I'm going to use water as an example in Cypress County. We, whether it be potable or raw water, we know that we need some access to more raw water so that people have the ability to, to grow, develop water is life. We know that. But the stumbling point always comes down to, well, where do you start it? You know, you have one person that brings it forward. Another councillor might look at it as a threat to the fact that they may not be prioritized into getting it done. And then it comes down to this, that's where the ugliness in politics municipally comes from is now you're trying to fight and, and find ways that you can, you know, prioritize your, your, your district or your ward, one over the other. And I think that that is a challenge and, and, yeah, there's, there's, there's a few other reasons I think that we need to look at.
I'm going to play devil's advocate with you.
Please go for it.
Because that would be all great, that everyone would work together, but wouldn't you have communities in your organization? Even let's take Cypress County. Wouldn't the, if every councillor was elected just in around Denmore area where the city office is?
Yeah, I understand where you're coming from with that and you're not, you're not wrong. The, the term abolish was probably a little bit on the strong point, but you know, it's, we need to get the views. So, but,
Most of ours are listeners, man.
But the, uh, when I, when I look at it though, it is, we have, we have wards right now that have 1,200 people in them and then another ward that has 200 people in them. And so, you know, representation, it, boards provide and they, they, they do create some challenges currently.
So how do you look at it though? Because you talk about abolishing and potentially moving to a more at large area. But right now we have that scenario where you are elected to represent the people that you've put you in that position. We go back to communication here for a second because communication I think is key for a lot of municipal councillors, even though that some might not do it as good as others. It's key.
Yeah.
How do you engage with your residents, knowing that sometimes you're going to have to upset them and say, sorry guys, this is not in the works for our ward this time? Because Ward two or Ward four or Ward nine or Ward eight is a lot more worse off than we are. And we have to just balance out the needs of theirs with the needs of what we want.
So my personal style is overwhelm them with information. Like it, there's in, in this day and age, people want access to details and information. And I find that if you can answer and, and provide the answers to the becauses and the here's whys and, and give, people are intelligent. If you give them the reasoning why, you're not going to convince everybody, but if there are good reasons why different priorities happen, that, that's fine. But just to take the approach of trust us, we've got this under control, that doesn't work anymore. And, uh, so I, I definitely try to err on the side of, um, over informing as much as possible.
Is there a balance that you have to take when over informing and correcting misinformation and lies?
Yeah.
Because you can over inform someone as much as you want, but they can go away and say, well, that's a complete book, pot, pot crock that you just sold me and I know the truth. So how do you balance what's out there with what the, what you understand is to be true?
Well, tactics and the narrative and who, who gets the information out there first is important, right? We talked about this a little bit earlier too, and how, um, when you have things that come up that are a little bit more contentious, uh, make sure that you get the facts and the details out there up front and centered. Uh, I've always believed that communications people within municipal organizations would value greatly in having a white paper that is published whenever there is a, a major, uh, issue that is, is being discussed and decided. That basically is an overall summary and frequent, you know, FAQ of here is, here is what we're doing. Here is the, the methodology, the reason behind, you know, the conversation. Here's the decision that we made based on the following criteria. And as questions come in and no different than, you know, I, I work in the construction industry and if we have a, a big tender that comes up, if there are questions that are asked by one contractor, the question is published, the answer is published to everybody. And, uh, and that way there, everybody benefits from the same questions and answers that are being promoted.
Again, devil's advocate because as someone who's worked in the communications field for municipality, you can communicate to the, you're blue in the face. Unless you go to every single door, every single person and literally put it in front of them. There's going to be those people who say, I didn't get it. I didn't understand it because you can do social media, you can do telephone town halls, you can put it on the website, you can even do posters and bulletin boards. There's going to be people who just say, I didn't get it. So how do you balance, especially in rural communities, because we are in a rural community right now?
Yeah.
How do you balance communicating with understanding that sometimes it's up to the residents if they want to be informed or not?
Agreed. I, I know, and I hear what you're saying, but I think that, that, you know, I've also seen in different situations where if you, people wanted to hear the, the information, that, that's, that's an important step. But there's also a willingness for, uh, uh, organization to get that information out ahead of time. And I think that's a bit of a culture change too. Because, uh, you know, when you look back 20, 30, 40 years and a lot of municipalities and organizations, it has been more of a, we are running the county, leave it to us. Um, and now people don't necessarily trust the institutions as much. And so it's important to be out front and to get that information out there ahead of time. So that when people do start responding and saying, hey, like where was this or whatever, you can actually point to it and say, look at published on this date, here's all the stuff, not coming up with it after the fact. Because again, you come up with the information after the fact and people will never trust it. If you come up with the information ahead of time, you just say, hey, listen, this is, this is our, our methodology is that we, you know, publish this ahead of time. You see everything that's there. If you have any questions, certainly come to us. But, um, I think that we're in a, in a bit of a shift in mindset right now with, with, from a rapier's perspective where the distrust in institution and government at times, um, is leading to a desire to become more engaged. Whether that means fully or just from an activist side, uh, you know, is yet to be seen.
Are people apathetic in Cypress County?
In some cases, yeah. And then some things wake you up and pull you out of apathy, right? And, and I don't know, I don't think that that's necessarily a bad thing. Apathy is sometimes can be a sign of, um, you know, contentment. Um, and that, you know, they're apathetic until they're not. And something sets them off and then, you know, if it's big enough, uh, it, it may not go, you know, back into dormancy again. It might just stay, you know, engaged and hot and, and, and hard, you know, hot wire.
The reason I ask that question is because I, I've sat down with many councillors and mayors across this country. And what they hear from their residents, don't traditionally, the issues that they hear about, don't traditionally fall in the municipal jurisdiction. They will talk about provincial healthcare education. They'll talk about things that are going on federally because quote unquote, that's the sexy stuff.
Yeah.
And municipally, they don't want to talk about wastewater treatment or water potable or not.
Yeah.
When you get people talking to you from your ward, from your county, is it more municipal issues that people are talking about? Or do you find that you're fielding more provincial and federal questions?
So the phone calls that I get are municipal.
Okay.
Yeah, the phone calls that I am getting mostly right now, uh, you know, we're in another very dry year. Uh, I get a lot of phone calls about cutting ditches, um, you know, guys that are trying to hay ditches and, and bail it up. And why are we mowing the grass and not farming it and bailing it? And, you know, water is, is one that, you know, forever is, is going to be a bigger and bigger issue. I don't have to deal with a lot of wastewater in my area because most of our, you know, we're all septic fields and, and, uh, we don't have a lot of sewer systems even throughout the county. Most of it is septic. But,
Do you get the random provincial or federal question?
Not so much. No.
I am shocked at this right now.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe it's the fact that I, I tend to differentiate if, if I get a call on it, it's like, well, you know, contact the MP or the MLA because that's not our jurisdiction.
But you can't do that for every single person though, right?
But honestly, the, the, I probably, in my ward, I, I don't get a lot of provincial and federal stuff. Um, I, I, you know, I have had calls when the, uh, the, the gun control debate was going on. I had people that would call me up, but I also had a little bit of an avenue to exercise on that because I was working with FCM chairing the rural caucus and we were able to have those debates and discussions at the federal level. So, but truly Chris, uh, the, the majority of what I get is more along roads, grading, uh, washboard on roads, dust abatement. So it's, it's, they definitely, you know, stayed within, within the lines on that one.
I want to ask one last question that I want to turn to Cypress County as a whole.
Sure.
And I want to know about the personal public life of a politician, especially in a rural community like Cypress County. You go out to the grocery store, you go to a community event, you're councillor.
Yeah.
You don't take your hat off. While people may assume that politicians get paid big bucks, we know, you and I know that you don't. You are basically a volunteer job and the only time that you get paid are when you're in meetings.
Yeah.
And for the majority of it. Have you found the work-life balance achievable, especially with a large family, uh, being in a rural community where you're able to disconnect from being councillor and being just Robin?
Yeah, I, I think that I have the, um,
Would your family say that?
Yeah, they would. Ultimately, I think that the voter is the one that decides on it, right? Because I, for me, I've been, we said I got nine kids. It's a lot of, it's a lot of attention that is, is needed at home and that's not counting my wife and she, she needs even more attention than the nine, um, just to make sure that she's okay after the day with all those kiddos. But the, um, you know, I, I try to attend the events that I can. I do, I, I talk with a lot of people over the phone. We have a lot of conversations, we run into each other, whether it be at schools or, or special events. But, um, you know, it's, it's a little bit different than, you know, being in the city where you have chamber commerce events and all these different things where, you know, you have the, the city council being invited to, and you're always kind of within that same thing. We have a couple of community halls in my ward and, uh, you know, we, we have a couple of projects that we work on together. We've got the, the windmill projects that are going on out here. I have a fair amount of engagement on those. And, uh, you know, the equestrian centers garnered a lot of, of attention and calls and strategy and meetings over the last four or five years. And, uh, you know, so you stay engaged as, as you can on those and then the boards that you're on. And, uh, but I, I do, I feel like, um, I give what I'm able to. And from what I hear from those who, who I talk to, uh, I have, I have the support of the community that, that elected me. And I think that at the end of the day, that, that is the, the most important part because that's who I'm accountable to.
I wanted to turn to Cypress County as a whole now. Before I ask this question, I want to preface it because I do this a lot on the show. This is a conversation between the councillor and myself. This is not a motion of council, this is not a direction of council. We always get emails about this question.
Thank you for clarifying that ahead of time. I just wanted to make sure.
Rob, in your opinion, as councillor, not as a direction of council, what is the biggest issue facing the county today?
Um,
Or issues?
Issues as in problems or opportunities?
Because I, Whatever way you want to answer that question.
Let's focus on the opportunities.
I love it.
I, I think that the biggest issue and opportunity that can be focused on for Cypress County right now is water and food security. You know, we are in one of the hottest, driest corners of the province. Um, you know, in, in my time with FCM, we worked heavily on creating new fiscal frameworks and funding models for municipalities when it comes down to climate adaptation and mitigation and trying to tie in some of the resiliency and opportunity type of projects that would come from, um, you know, adapting and mitigating flooding. For example, is having more and more reservoirs. And with reservoirs, you have a, an increased ability to provide water for irrigation and for some of those raw water projects like we talked about. These kinds of things are not cheap. There are also things that are not generally funded as a municipal only. And, uh, and so they're oftentimes shared, uh, between the three levels of government. And we, we need to continue to push on the 15 and 20 year strategies. And I think that that is the biggest opportunity. It's also the biggest challenge because we tend to focus on the here and now. And I think that anytime that a municipal government is looking at specifically councils that are looking at things that are about today, we're maybe losing sight of why we're there. We're trying to project and lay out a plan and from a governance perspective that is going to lead the community in the county into the next 25 years. We must be able to answer questions like, what does the county look like in 10 years, in 20 years? We have to have those visions and then we have to work to make that happen. It doesn't happen on its own.
Well, it's important to think about 10 years from now. You can't forget about the here now. Because there's issues that are going on in this community, I'm assuming.
There's, there's a certain level of reacting for sure.
Exactly. So how do you balance that? And how does this council balance the needs of forethought with the needs of not reacting? Because I hate reacting to issues, but being proactive on the issues that are going on in the community today.
Yeah, well, you hit, you hit the word on, on the head, like proactive versus reactive, right? Like there's a difference between making sure that you have enough greater operators and graders that versus going and actually taking the keys from the greater operator's hands and finishing the road. That, that is not our role.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's not.
Shocking.
Right? Exactly. But, you know, to me, you, you have to have a certain level and, and a healthy level of trust, uh, and, and accountability within your administration to deliver on those day-to-day things. When you have a council having to get involved in a react, reaction stuff at a operating level, I, I don't think that's the role. Now, there are still things that come up like emergencies and things like that where you have,
Water main breaks, you'd never anticipate, but they happen.
Yeah, but a, a water main breaking, what is that for council? Council has to approve a budget, right? It's a budget item, but that's, that's still maintenance.
It's a budget item, but then if that budget then pushes you over into the red, which you know municipalities can't run deficits, you then have to look at where do we cut back?
Okay. So, and then what are your reserves and are you, are you running so lean that you don't have reserves for things like that? And if that is the case, right? Like we, so in, in Cypress County, we have, we have a lot of money in the bank, not as much as say, um, you know, Like we, so in, in Cypress County, we have, we have a lot of money in the bank, not as much as say, um, you know, uh. Wood Buffalo, and you know, they got, they've got a pretty good chunk of change. But even when they had the fires and the floods, like they had the ability to tap into some of these different reserves. We aren't there to make profits, but we are also there to govern appropriately. When you have to replace equipment and you have to replace different pipelines and everything, you need, that's why asset management is so important. Knowing and projecting what's going to be there, because if you're having to fix something on your road grading allowance, because you didn't project that. Stuff happens. That comes back to why is council not thinking about the things that can happen and why are we, you know. We live in an area where we have some of the lowest taxes. Cypress County has, you know, our, our taxes on a percentile base. Um, are, are among the lowest in the entire province. And, uh, one of the things I, I, I liked low taxes, I, I enjoy low taxes. But in my first and second year, I, I started promoting, um, a, a, a bit of a shift in thinking when it came to tax management. And then financial projecting in order to manage stuff like that, because we were, we were kind of in a race to the bottom. We had money set aside that we're like, oh, we're, we're good, we're safe. But we weren't able to offer some of the services that we wanted to or that our rate payers wanted to, because we would play the card that, you know, we, we didn't. We don't have the money for it, but we were in the lowest tax bracket and then it also meant. That we were only able to achieve and maintain status quo too. And so we looked at it and said, okay, instead of being at the first percentile on oil and gas, which still generates like sixty-five percent of the revenue in the county. Why don't we try to get all of our land uses at the twentieth percentile? That way there, when somebody comes to me and says, hey, I'm a farmer, why am I paying so much for my taxes? We can look at them and say, here is why we set the mill rate where we do. The assessment, you know, whether it's provincially assessed or it's done municipally, that, that, that is what it is. Council set the mill rate and what we look at is we just say, okay, in three years, four years ago, we looked at it and said. In order to be where we wanna be in five years, if we aim to be at the twentieth percentile on all four land uses. It's fair and equitable across the table. There's a rhyme and reason to why we're doing it, not just laying it on one rate payer all the time. And, uh, and we're actually gonna have revenue that we can start putting into our asset management program, make sure that we're banking on things.
Just, can you not have an asset management program right now?
Well, we have it. We have, we're working through it and we're tracking our tangible and non-tangibles and, and making sure, we've always had it for our. Trucks and like fleet equipment and things, but we're working on it now for things like bridges and culverts, because as the province begins to download a little bit more and more. And you aren't sure what you're gonna be doing. It's funny how, you know, a fifty million dollar liability looks more like a hundred and fifty million dollar liability or two hundred. And we know that if oil and gas is on its way down. That is a risk that we, that we, you know, have to acknowledge when it's one of our biggest customers. Um, how do we ensure that, uh, we are prepared and, you know, make the proper decisions ahead of time so that. When that potentially disappears someday, that we don't just risk having to amalgamate and dissolve because we can't afford to, to stay in business ourselves.
Is it hard to say no to people?
No, I don't think so.
Especially when people come to you and ask for help, because at the end of the day, the decisions you make, and I'm gonna. I, I quote Scott Pierce on this show more often than I ever thought I would after he became president, but here we are. He's right when he said that you are the government of proximity.
Yep.
The decisions you make are going to affect people the day after you make them.
Yeah, that's right.
You're not in Edmonton, you're not in Ottawa.
Yeah.
When people come to you and say, we can't survive on raising taxes to potentially look at ten, fifteen years from now or even. Uh, raising service levels to offset some of the things that you might have to renegotiate and move around. Is it hard to look at people and say, I, I would love to help you, but unless we, like you say, fold.
Yeah.
This is how it has to be done.
Hmm, see, and that to me, I, I don't like disappointing people. I don't.
It doesn't seem like you do though.
No, I, but I, I don't, I don't mind saying no. Um, and, and saying no, again, my style is no, but here are the reasons why. And if we can, if there are enough, like that's the thing with democracy is if you have enough people that are prepared to do something a little bit differently. Like if, just let's use a, a, a random example. There was a desire at one point to maybe build a hockey arena and done more. Uh, connect it with the high school and do a big hockey academy. If, if there was a countywide desire to make that thing go, you could, you could make some changes within. The taxes, you could fund it, you could do your thing and, and you could go. But if you have five or six councillors that absolutely do not wanna do it. Um, at the end of the day, what council decides is what people are, are stuck with, or at least that's what the, the decision that is made. Um, but to me, it, it. I'm not afraid of no. I'm, I'm not afraid of no, as long as the answers are there. If I'm not comfortable with the answers, no can suck. Because then I have the same kind of frustration and perhaps unrest as the rate payers do. And that's where then you have that struggle of making sure that you are, as a councillor. Um, not getting too into the weeds, because then your desire is to get involved at the administration level, not at the governance level.
You, I wanna ask this question correctly, so I apologize if I, I, I stop and start twice here. But you are in a rural community. Your taxes may be low, but the cost of living out here is high.
Yeah.
When you increase taxes even one percent on people, particularly in this tough economic time. It is challenging for people. When you walk into that council table and make the decisions. You have to make some pretty tough choices. Does it weigh on you?
Yeah, if it doesn't, you shouldn't do it.
Un- understandable, but how do you get through that? Because the decisions you make are affecting people's pocketbooks.
Yeah.
And we, we know, we, 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 we see Twitter, we see Facebook, the people who complain and are upset about the provincial and federal governments. But traditionally municipalities have a bigger impact on our day-to-day lives, because that's where our property taxes are going.
Yeah.
That it's being dispersed by provincial levy, the school levy.
Yeah, I think value.
How do you get through those days when you know that decisions you're about to make are about to impact your neighbors, your family members and your community members?
I think that value-based decision-making is important. Because I can't think right now of many times where we've had to. Make a decision that was going to massively negatively influence somebody.
Not even negatively impact someone, like even an impact of one percent. Could be a hundred dollars, could be two hundred dollars and some people are just scraping by right now.
So a hundred dol- so right now on, just I'm gonna use an example with, uh, with the egg rates in Cypress County.
Yeah.
A one percent increase is two dollars.
Okay. A year, not a month. Okay, okay.
So in like some quarters of land are a hundred and twenty dollars for the year, for a quarter.
Okay.
Right? So there are certain, you know, parts where, you know, egg contributes one point eight million a year. To our thirty million dollar budget, right? Uh, oil and gas contributes like twenty million a year. And, uh, so one percent on oil and gas is significant, but I've had some interesting conversations with oil and gas as well, because yes, they have. Enjoyed some of the lowest mill rates in the province down here. But going back fifteen, twenty, thirty years ago, oil and gas companies were in extremely philanthropic too. Um, when gas dropped in two thousand and nine, uh, a, a lot of that. Community giving slowed down or even stopped. And, uh. When you have philanthropic kind of approaches from a, a corporate level, you can keep. Taxes low because the community takes care of itself. When that disappears, the only way that you can provide community services is to fund it through the county. Which our only tax generating is through tax. You know, one percent on our oil and gas is like. Three quarters of a million bucks in a year, right? But one percent on egg, for example, is eighteen thousand. Okay.
Okay, and I apologize for asking. I think it's an important question that people need to realize that.
I'm not saying that, cause your, your statement about, you know, when things are tight, a hundred bucks is a lot for some people.
Even two bucks is a lot for a lot of people, right? Don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to say that people are struggling.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna to diminish that at all, but I think that when I look at it and go, all right, when, if we make a decision. And that decision means that it's going to end up costing somebody something more. Are we able to provide? Enough of a value, you know, with that, you can't just maintain the status quo while increasing costs. If you're increasing costs, you better be prepared to deliver more, to be more engaged, to be, you know, providing better services. Um, otherwise, how do you sell it?
I want you to put your former chair of the rural caucus at FCM hat on right now.
Okay.
And this is not a question about Cypress County in general. Uh, this is about rural communities across Canada. You have been on the front lines of rural municipalities for six years now. You have seen and heard from stories from municipal councillors from across Canada. Are rural councils struggling right now and do they have a future in Canada? Because you said a key word a little bit a while ago, about amalgamation.
Hmm.
About the future, if it doesn't look good, you're gonna have to fold up and amalgamate with communities around you. Can you see that happening in some parts of this country?
Yeah, I can.
I know you just, you, you struggled to answer that. I apologize.
I gulped there and, and but, so I, just like you said earlier, like this is, this is my.
This is your opinion?
I'm not even, I'm not even wearing the former hat as the rural guy for FCM, because this is something that just.
Because you're seeing downloading from the provincial government and territorial governments, you're seeing municipalities get a big bill from the federal government. With retroactive pay. I'm not sure if Cypress County got one, but I'm assuming they did.
Yeah, Alberta's managed more through the province and, and things like, but where you see it is like Saskatchewan and Manitoba and.
Yeah.
And in Ontario, Quebec, there's, there's differences that way, but there, you gotta remember, there are some rural municipalities that have like forty-five people in them. Like, holy smokes, how many, you were at, at, uh, SARM, um, how, how many members do they have? I think they have some like six hundred.
Suma and they have seven hundred, if I, John Mark is gonna probably yell at me once I say this number, but I think it's over seven hundred.
Yeah.
Uh, and that's a lot.
Like, I love my Saskatchewan brothers and sisters, you know all that. Um, but like, holy smokes, there are a lot of municipalities throughout Saskatchewan and.
Well, New Brunswick as well and even Manitoba, and they all went through that amount, forced amalgamation from the province.
Yeah, and, and so like you, at a certain point, I do agree that, that there needs to be the conversation about what is the most effective, effective, efficient. At the, at the end of the day, we have one, we have one taxpayer.
Yeah.
We are more and more being identified as that third order of government.
Even though they don't treat you like it.
Well, yeah, you know, and maybe it might, it must be getting near a federal election, because now we're hearing all three parties referring to it as, you know, a municipal. As another order of government, which is like, and you put that in writing, please, but the, uh. At, at the end of the day, how can we have the strongest voice?
Yeah.
And what, uh, having the strongest voice doesn't necessarily mean having more voices. It is, how do you organize? And I think that that's why.
Do you think rural, rural voices get heard at the table?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, we always think about Edmonton, Toronto, Calgary.
No, I think, and this is, this is a personal one for me, because this has been my mission for the last three, four years with, with FCM, is that. Rural has unique challenges that we face and when I got in as rural chair and working with FCM and I was the rural rep for Alberta on the board.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, the, the first thing was, well, how do we define rural? How do we define it? And, uh, what we ended up coming to, to grips with is that you can't, because it's so vast, so, so broad. So generally, there, there's, you got rural Alberta is very different than northern Alberta. You got, you know, rural and interior of BC. And then you've got Yukon and Calhoun and like rural, it covers a lot. And but what we have to do is we have to recognize the differences that we have. We need to be confident in the voice that we have as rural and we have to be unashamedly bold. But we also have to be problem solvers. We can't just come and say, woe is us, we're not seen, we're not heard. If you go in, like I, I, one of my favorite conversations that we had with, uh, some of the different federal leaders. Um, with, uh, Jake Meatsing, uh, back in, I think it was December, and I could just, I told him like. We, we have challenges that are so unique. We, we need to be able to, um, find ways. As rural, as the rural municipalities and as the, the rural form. We can't approach it the same way as the cities do, where it's all about funding, funding, funding. We actually need to start thinking outside of the box and saying, how can we go to our federal government? How do we go to our provincial government? And ask for solutions that require cooperation between different ministries. So that we are able to achieve more for less.
Yeah.
You know, if we're doing a project between one community and the other, don't bypass one of the reserves. You know, let's bring in the, the different ministries, let's bring in the, the First Nations people, let's bring in everybody, let's collaborate, because we know. That we don't have economies of scale to work in our favor from a, a, a population standpoint. If we have one trench, let's get eighteen different, you know, conduits in it or whatever. That's an analogy, but. Let's not be digging the same trench ten different times and all be fighting over budget. When we could have just focused on a big project that had a utility corridor that just happened to. Connect with, you know, and that, that's what we have to find ways to do within rural. I'm convinced of that. We need to find ways to be more efficient with our asks and we need to be better at. Identifying what that, like what, where the jurisdictional opportunities or responsibilities are. And then coordinate as the three orders to ensure that we get stuff done for our people, cause at the end of the day, there's just the one taxpayer.
We're probably about forty minutes into this. I don't mind. I know, but I wanna turn to my last subject here, because, uh. I know you're a busy man and I wanna make sure that you get back to doing what you need to do outside of being a councillor. I don't wanna talk about tourism. I like tourism and as someone who's literally in your community right now.
Yeah.
I'm gonna be looking for tourist things to do while I start heading back towards Calgary. Awesome. So what are some hidden gems in Cypress County that people, tourists need to see if they come visit?
Well, unlike fishermen, which never like to tell about their favorite little fishing hole. Um, no, we have Cypress County, uh, we, you know, we, we're the home of Cypress Hills, Alberta's site, so we have the Elkwater Provincial Park is. Uh, only twenty-five minutes from my house here right now. That's beautiful, you know, Alberta.
We'll be posting a photo of it on social media when this comes out, just FYI.
That's right. It's, it's amazing. Um, but you know, it's, we got bald prairies all over and then we got this. Little area of the hills that are just covered in trees and you feel like you're in the foothills and it's, it's amazing. Um, lakes, we've got, uh, a lot of recreational reservoirs as well, but you know, throughout Cypress County, you've got. Uh, Red Rock Cooley, you've got, the Etzicam has their, their museum out there. There's, there's a lot of good things around here. Medicine Hat's got some wicked little microbrews around. Uh, IXL, um, the, uh, uh, the pottery, um. I'm blank, drawing a blank at the moment, um.
It's that good. He just doesn't wanna talk about it.
Now I feel terrible. I know IXL is the brick, it's the, where they made all the pottery back in like the early nineteen hundreds.
Oh.
You, what you should do is bail me out by posting a picture of this.
No, totally, yeah. They'll be, they'll be one.
Yeah, and then, then, yeah, you'll know what I mean, talking about, but, uh, no, it's, um, Medelta, that's it. Medelta pottery, that's a good one. Actually, it's, uh, it's a bit of a museum and a.
I'm always up for a good museum.
Yeah, it's, it's awesome. Um, and then a lot of parks, like Medicine Hat, you know, city right on the river. They've got trails connecting all three municipalities right now. You can, uh, get around, Echo Dale Park is a great place to go play in. They've got some good golf courses. I don't know if you like golfing, but Desert Bloom is a golf course within the county that's.
Speak my love language, man.
Oh, man, it's awesome. Yeah, it's, uh, lots of creeks, long course, really good terrain.
Nine, eighteen?
Eighteen. It was kind of like PGA style course. It's, it's very nice. Brings, bring extra balls, cause it is, it, it swallows them up if it's off the rough. Not saying like I have some experience in that one, but yeah.
I wanna end with the million dollar question.
Okay.
In your opinion, what makes Cypress County such a unique place to live, to work and to play?
Good people. We have, we have amazing people. We have amazing opportunity. We live in one of the most underappreciated and potentially underseen. I'm not saying we're invisible or we're forgotten. That's not the case, but we are a little hidden gem down here. And, uh, it's affordable, um, you know, housing is, is reasonable. But it is just the, the pace of life that we have down here and the potential that we have is unbelievable. Really, the sky is the limit for, for Cypress County. I think that, uh. As we find some wins with the water security and, and going forward with some of those issues. Um, the food corridor, the twinning of highway three, uh, coming down here, it's been a really, uh, I think it's a positive thing already having. Premier Smith in Medicine Hat Brooks, um, with Justin Wright now.
This is Justin Wright's Emily.
Justin Wright is my area, yeah, but, uh, Premier Smith is, uh, from, basically from the river north up the Brooks, so. Um, we share the two, the two of them within Cypress County. And, uh, it, it's a positive thing for, for our region to have, have the premier down here and, and her seeing exactly what the. The heartbeat of the community is both rural and urban. And, uh, and I think that we're. We're moving in the direction right now of probably having one of the best relationships regionally. Um, between the town, the city and, and the county. We're, we're not there yet. We're, we're, we're climbing those, that, that ladder, those steps. But I do believe that we have a lot of the pieces, uh, of the puzzle in line and, uh, our region is going to see some wonderful things moving forward.
Wonderful, thank you. I wanna thank you. I wanna thank you from the bottom of my heart, Robin, from A inviting me into your house, but also for doing this interview and being our six hundredth guest, it's greatly appreciated.
Well, I hope, I hope that I did it justice and I'm grateful that you came and uh hopefully we can uh do this again sometime.
We certainly will. So with that, I wanna remind everyone, uh we will be off until September fourth. We do have some episodes that are gonna be dropping sporadically throughout the month of August and uh the later part of July. But we'll be off until September fourth with brand new episodes. Until then, remember, put down your phone, go have a conversation with somebody. It helps our society, helps our democracy and it helps us be better people. Until next time, just remember, just keep talking.